The Committee of the Whole. That's a new Zoom feature. So it gives us full acknowledgement that we're aware we're being recorded. I learned that last week. So, good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipality of Jasper for today, Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. As it is 9:31, I will call us to order. Counselors, before you is the agenda for today's meeting. Administration, council, is there anything to add to today's agenda? Mr. Given.
Just from administration's perspective, we wanted to acknowledge that there was an email from the Chamber of Commerce that in terms of communication that I believe all members of council received, administration also received that. Just in terms of processing, though it didn't make it to our agenda. But I believe all council members received a copy of that, and I just wanted to flag that. It could have been included in our correspondence, and maybe at some point we need to clarify what is correspondence and what the right channels are for things to hit the agenda and timelines. But administration just wanted to clarify that that had been received, given that it was formally from the Chamber of Commerce. Want to acknowledge that it's received and acknowledge that all council members had seen that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Any other additions to today's agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve today's agenda as presented? Thank you very much, Counselor Kellarampe. All in favor? That's carried. Before us are the minutes of May 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, changes to be made to those minutes? Hearing no changes, may I have a motion to approve the May 11th, 2021 Committee of the Whole minutes as presented? Counselor Butler, thank you. All in favor? That's carried. Mr. Given, we have no presentations that have arisen? Thank you. We'll move past the agenda item number five to agenda item number six, business arising from the minutes. Is there any business arising? Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. I just, this isn't really arising necessarily from the last minutes, but I wanted to just take an opportunity to ask a question about the 2020 financial statements. And just ask Mr. Given, are those going to be put on an agenda and be presented to council? I know we saw them in conjunction with the auditor's report. But I also noticed that they haven't yet been published on the website. So I'm just wondering if we're waiting to see those come onto an agenda or if they will just turn up on the website in due course. Yeah, that's my question.
Mr. Given?
Thanks Deputy Mayor McGrath. My understanding is that past practice in Jasper is that they haven't come in their full form as a part of agenda package. They're typically posted online. Council members will receive hard copies of this, and they will be posted for the public viewing online, as is our past practice. Going forward, my suggestion, and I've already spoken with Ms. Melanchuk about this. In future years, council, when the auditor presents, will be presented with the full financial statements for your review at the same time that you're receiving the auditor's presentation, so that you might have those statements in hand to ask additional questions. I understand that hasn't happened in the past in Jasper, but that's what we'll be doing going forward. So council would receive it as a part of the agenda package with the auditor's presentation for next year. But they will be going up online for public review this year. Council members will receive hard copies of it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Thank you, Mr. Given. Anything further from business arising from the minutes of May 11th? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, policy and governance. Is there anything to discuss under council's strategic priorities update? Moving on to new business agenda item number eight, 8.1, the approved 2021 budget and draft taxation rates by law. Mr. Given?
Okay, council, this is gonna be fun. So in your package, this, sorry, I will say that this is in response to the discussion last week at the regular council meeting where administration presented the draft 2021 mill rate bylaw. So during that discussion, during that presentation, there was some discussion about the, on a number of different issues, but mostly focused on the need or perceived need for the municipality to come into compliance with provincial law that suggests that municipalities should be at a five to one ratio of non-residential taxes to residential taxes. So administration has done some work over the last week, in less than a week. And in your package, you see the adjusted draft taxation rates bylaw that really takes care of the housekeeping items. The council members noticed in terms of a typo, in terms of the year, the swapping of capital and operational requisition for Evergreen Foundation, and some improvements on providing additional clarity around some abbreviations that are in the bylaw. But the bylaw is essentially as it was, other than those administrative changes, because council wanted to have a discussion about the five to one ratio. And before I launch into that, I do want to say that there was also some discussion and question about timelines and when we needed to have the mill rate bylaw passed. During that meeting, I said that we had certain legislative deadlines, and on review, it actually is my misunderstanding, and I'll say that out front. There aren't actually any legislative deadlines for when the municipality sends notices to taxpayers. It's the legislation simply says that we must do that in the year in which the taxes are levied. So, you know, we, we could send tax notices to taxpayers December 31st of 2021 if we wished. The challenge with that, and this is where my understanding was, the challenge with that becomes a cash flow challenge for the municipality. If we never tell people how much taxes they owe, and we don't require them to pay them until later in the year, that starts to become a cash crunch for the municipality to finance operations and municipal operations. Essentially, we can't pay our bills because we have no revenue, because we haven't asked anybody to pay their taxes. So there is a operational imperative and not a legislative requirement for us to send them relatively early in the year. I think the past practice has been for municipalities to do it about this time of the year, because we're about halfway through, or, you know, in the first half. And, you know, generally municipalities can sort of float the operations for the first half of the year. But as you start to get into the second half of the year, you need to have that tax revenue coming in. Over the last two years, as a result of the COVID pandemic, many municipalities have shifted their tax payment deadlines. The latest that I've seen them is on October, some to August, some to September. Some municipalities did that in 2020 and have chosen not to do so in 2021. Some municipalities are continuing to choose to shift their tax payment deadlines to later in the year. We could do that in Jasper as well. That is an option that's available to council if they wish. The council should know that in order to manage the risk of a potential cash crunch, a shortage in revenue when compared to our expenses, the municipality would need to ensure that we had appropriate credit facilities available to us. I believe the municipality has a line of operating credit with an institution that would allow us to manage that. We have not at this time done any analysis of whether that credit facility, basically that line of credit, would be enough to handle municipal operations. We haven't done any analysis on that. But I just wanted to clarify that I had provided an answer that said that there was a legislative timeline that was incorrect. Well, there is, but it says that we just have to do it in 20, sometime in 2021. So there's nothing that says that we must do it in June or anything like that. So I just want to provide that clarity to council so that you know that the real driver is that operational imperative of having enough cash to be able to pay our employees and literally keep the lights on in facilities. So with that out of the way, with this minor housekeeping adjustments out of the way with respect to the tax rate bylaw, maybe I will go into the presentation. Actually, I'll pause first to see if there are any additional questions on either of those other two items before we go into the five to one discussion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Given, for beginning and starting us off with that point of clarification. It's much appreciated. Is there any questions from council? Counselor Demota?
I don't have any questions on what Mr. Given has just said, but thank you very much for the clarification and, yeah, giving us that information. I appreciate that we have a new updated budget as the tax rate bylaw does make reference to it. So I appreciate having that cleaned up and I just wanted to, to address the change again, and I was just, I wanted to bring to light that we have a third rendition of what we've looked at through the process, and I was just wondering why 2019 was left out of the net tax envelope by department. And I'm only asking that because the whole basis of our, you know, decisions this year was based off 2019 and understanding that 20 was an off year. And so that 2019 was going to be our base, and that was kind of the premise of our original presentation, and I saw that that changed just recently. So I just wanted to, to bring that to light and just ask why that, why that was.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor McGrath, thanks very much. So Counselor Demota, you're exactly right. So just to be really clear, though, the budget hasn't changed. The presentation of the budget has been adjusted since you first saw it in November. Part of that is at least due to me trying to focus the discussion as I got here on some of the new alternatives that I was bringing to the table. And in terms of this presentation that's in your package and posted to the municipal website, or should be posted to the municipal website shortly now that council's received it. We wanted to go back to more of a year-over-year representation. I appreciate, though, that given sort of the bump that the 2020 year was, that that 2019 may be important context. It certainly was during our budget presentations and discussion. And as you say, Counselor Demota, the fact that it is a, our reference point year is really 2019. We would acknowledge that the 2019 numbers can be seen in prior year budgets on the web, but it isn't as simple for the public to see. We can see if there's some adjustments that we could make to include that. And I should say that, you know, just administratively, the reformatting of the way the budget is presented, we need to establish some consistency in that because going through and republishing the document three or four times now since November is a workload that is in addition to some complex math like we're about to get into, into the five to one ratio. So totally appreciate that we need to get the consistency and that the 2019 is what the public needs to understand as our base year. Administration will find additional ways to clarify that in the materials.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demota. Thank you, Mr. Given. Any other questions? Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much, and thanks, Counselor Demota, for bringing that forward. So I just want to clarify, Mr. Given. I agree that it would be helpful for the public looking at this if there are 2019 comparatives, perhaps even if it was just in the overall summary, which we call the net tax envelope. So are you saying that for the presentation posted on the website that there will be some visibility of the 2019 numbers so people can see that comparative as it is posted on the website?
Yes, Deputy Mayor McGrath for Counselor Butler, yes, we will. We'll just make sure that we adjust that. We wanted to ensure first that council saw this package, and we may have just administratively uploaded this package this morning. But we'll make sure that we go through, have a look at it. If we need to pull it back, we can do so. Insert some additional information to provide that 2019, 2020, 2021 comparison, recognizing that the public needs to understand that the comparator year shouldn't be 2020, it should be 2019.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demota?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that goes behind this, and I'm sure it's not easy. So, you know, I was thinking going forward for, you know, 2022 and beyond that, you know, the changes that have been made recently are very good, they're clear, and I think it's a, it's a good movement to go forward. I just felt that, you know, just to clean up this year and to keep it consistent to what we've been receiving so far, I would be more appreciative of seeing a similar format to what we've, what we saw in November and in in April. And I did like the April presentation, the changes there. And it was just, it was just missing that, that one component of the next, the net tax envelope summary. So, you know, again, appreciate the changes and the work. I was just kind of hoping for a little bit more consistency for what we've received this year, and then, you know, for the next council, maybe changing that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. Are there any other questions for Mr. Given or administration before we move on with Mr. Given's presentation? Hearing none, you may take it away, Mr. Given.
Okay, so I'm going to do a screen share council as we run through this. By all means, if anybody would like me to turn off the screen share so you can see all of your colleagues, please just say so verbally. But I have a very brief PowerPoint. I will ask, maybe if I could run through the PowerPoint in full, and if possible, if you could hold your questions, just so we can get through the analysis, there are three different alternatives. I'd like to provide an overview of what they mean. And then we can go back through and cycle through and ask questions specifically each of them, or any clarifying questions that council may have. If that works for council, then, and I see some nods that will, then we'll go into that. I will start with my screen share, make sure that I'm set up on the right slide, and I am. And and making sure that everyone can see that. I believe you should be able to.
I can see it.
Okay, good, council, I hear at least one, and so I'm says my screen sharing or Zoom share. Okay, there we go. There you go. Sorry about that, council, if there's a little disruption. So this is a discussion about the five to one tax ratio. That's shorthand, an inside ball for all of us who are familiar with what it means, but for the public who may not. Generally, residential properties pay taxes at a lower rate than commercial properties. This is commonplace across Alberta and common, I believe, in North America generally. In Jasper, we essentially have three different municipal mill rates. Non-residential, meaning commercial properties of all types, from the gas station to a hotel property. Residential properties, meaning exactly as it sounds, residential properties where people live. And in Jasper, we also have a bit of a unique class in lake properties. And these are the, some of the properties at Lake Edith. The, the ratio between these three classes of properties are currently set at five to one to 0.58333. So that means that for every $1 in taxes that a residential property would pay, that's the one in the middle, a commercial property would pay $5 in taxes. And a Lake Edith property would pay 58 cents in property taxes. Now, I'm making, I should say through this, I will make some sweeping generalizations to really oversimplify, but just so that people understand the principle, this is what the five to one ratio means, that for every $1 in taxes that a residential property would pay, a commercial property would pay five. And I have already noted that in my haste, I made a minor error in the middle line in my first slide. How terrible is that? So in Jasper, they're currently at a ratio of 5.1 for non-residential properties to one for residential properties, meaning that for every $1 in taxes that a residential property would pay, a commercial property has to pay $5.10. And now that I've just muddied the waters on my very first slide, I hope you're still with me. But so in Jasper, we have a 5.1 to one to five to 0.58333 ratio. There are only 38 lake properties at the 0.58 ratio. These properties, I think, are generally understood to be accessible seven months of the year. And the, you know, this is a historic anomaly in the municipality. This would not be common in other places. And administration wasn't able to identify specific decisions that led to this. But it, I think we can understand that it is the case today. We are not in position, over the course of the last five days, to be able to really ferret out the reasons why this exists as it does, but it does exist. And so those 38 properties on Lake Edith, and it should be noted, those 38 properties pay essentially for seven months of the year. There are initial 12 properties at Lake Edith that pay at 12 months of the year. So council should know that when I say Lake Edith properties, again, I'm generalizing down to those 38 properties and excluding the other 12 that are 12 months of the year. I think that this all highlights the complexity of Jasper's mill rate system and the taxes that we pay. You'll see some additional complexity that, that I will try to focus us on the tax ratio discussion. So for comparison to our 5.1 to one to 0.58333, the regional municipality of Wood Buffalo or Furt McMurray had a ratio of 18 to one in 2017, and by 2020 had moved down to 7.8 to one. So in Wood Buffalo in 2017, a residential property would have paid $1 in taxes, and a commercial property would have paid $18 in taxes. And this instance and others like it in mostly rural municipalities across the province led the then NDP government to enact a change in legislation that suggested that municipalities should, should transition to a five to one ratio. The government changed the municipal government act and said that they would develop regulations that would provide what sort of timelines municipalities had to come into compliance with this overall provision in the law. The regulations with respect to that transition were never passed and haven't been passed under the current government. And so there was a implied desire in the legislation, maybe even an expressed desire in the legislation for municipalities to conform to a five to one. Municipalities that did not, like Wood Buffalo, and to a lesser extent Jasper, were noted as non-compliant. And there was no timeline set for when they must come into compliance with that five to one ratio. So it could be understood that municipalities that were not at a five to one ratio or were above that ratio were grandfathered in or non-compliant, but the government in the then NDP government and our current UCB government have not set any guidance or timeline for when municipalities are required. There is no current requirement for municipalities to come into compliance with that five to one ratio. So in the presentation today, administration is providing three different alternatives. The first that we'll look at is a straight conversion of a five to one ratio across the board of residential, of non-residential to residential taxes. The second is a five to one ratio with an over levy to enable council to provide a rebate to those 38 lake properties. The third option is a five to one ratio where the municipality would reduce its revenue in order to provide a rebate to those 38 lake properties. And the reason that we're focusing on the lake properties, as you will see, they are actually the, the class of property that sees the greatest impact. Remember, they are currently paying 0.58 in that ratio. And if we are going to a strict five to one ratio, then it basically doubles their taxes, and that increases spread out among only those 38 properties. So you'll see what that, what that impact is. And so administration wanted to illustrate what that would look like and provide council some alternatives if they wish to mitigate that substantial impact on that small number of properties. Council may choose not to mitigate that impact and move to a clear five to one ratio between non-residential and residential. And you can see that in alternative A. If everybody's still with me, I will move into the first alternative. So in alternative A, this scenario, I'll, maybe I'll just orient you to the table a little bit. And the real area to focus on is the current ratios, and then moving to the five to one ratios, and you can see to the right of that column, the current revenue that is generated at the one to 5.1 to 0.583 ratios. You can see how much revenue is generated for the municipality from each class of taxpayer. And then the next column over where it says five to one revenue, that shows what would, how much revenue would be derived from each class under the new conform, and I'll use the shorthand, conforming ratio of the five to one ratio. The next column shows the dollar value change, and the final column shows the percent change for that class. The things that I point your attention to here, you can see that there are, there's an additional complexity in Jasper where not every one of our services are equally, not, the cost of our services are not all equally distributed among urban and rural tax base. Some services see their expense 100% apportioned to the urban tax base. Some services see their costs apportioned in a 50/50 manner across urban and rural. And so there's an additional complexity that frankly is not relevant to the discussion today, would be worthy of some analysis in the future, but is actually not relevant to the discussion today. The summary here is that if we went to a straight five to one ratio, the total residential tax burden goes up just over $22,000. And that additional burden would be spread among all of the residential property owners in the municipality. The non-residential tax burden goes down by $52,000, and that savings would be shared by every single non-residential property. And the burden for the lake properties goes up by $29,000, just under $30,000. And I guess the, and so you can see in terms of the percentages, there's actually a little bit of addition going on to, to get my 22,000, 52,000, and 29,000. I'm actually adding up some residential across the urban and rural types. But these totals are the amounts that taxpayers would see there in the tax classes would see their amounts go up or down by. I'll move on. And so here you can see that the lake, the Lake Edith properties, those 38 properties, are having to share an additional burden of just under $30,000. And for comparison's sake, you know, there are hundreds of residential taxpayers that would be splitting the 22,000 above, so that the impact to an individual taxpayer would be much less in the town site than the impact of the Lake Edith properties. In alternative B, administration was attempting to provide a way to mitigate that substantial increase to those 38 properties of council wished. In this scenario, the total, and the essence of this scenario is that everybody pays a little bit extra. All the other classes pay a little bit extra, so that there is additional revenue that council can use to provide a rebate back to those Lake Edith properties that are under the seven-month scenario. And so in this case, the residential tax burden goes up 27, just under $28,000, 27, 847. The non-residential burden only goes down by $28,000. The lake properties do go up by 29,000, but council now has enough revenue that you can provide a rebate back to those taxpayers, so that they are sent, the lake property taxpayers, so they are essentially kept at a, at a regular rate that they'd seen before. So this is easiest to see at the bottom of the table, where you can see under current revenue, the total there is $8 million. That's the amount of tax revenue the municipality is collecting at current rates and is required to fund our tax-funded, our tax envelope. In this over levy scenario, we collect $8,90,572, which is actually more than we need to fund municipal operations by 29,775. That additional money is money that council could use to let, to provide a rebate back to those lake properties, bringing our actual municipal revenue down to the 8,60,000. bringing our actual municipal revenue down to the eight million sixty thousand seven nine seven. The final scenario would see the total residential tax burden go up twenty two thousand dollars. The non-residential burden go down fifty two thousand dollars. The lake properties go up by twenty nine thousand dollars. And council in this case would not over levy to provide additional revenue to give the rebate. We would essentially just lower our municipal revenue. And so in this case, you can see that under current rates, we get eight million sixty thousand seven nine seven. We would collect the same amount of money, eight million sixty thousand seven nine seven. We would provide a rebate to the lake properties of twenty nine thousand dollars, leaving the municipality with just under thirty thousand dollars less in revenue to fund municipal operations. This is quite a complex system. I want to thank Ms. Malinchuck for assisting me with the base calculations. And I want to say that if there are errors in addition, they are mine, not Ms. Melvin checks. There is in fact, as I was presenting, developing the slides, I see that there is at least one area of about four hundred dollars. There's a four hundred and fifty eight in the middle of this slide that I didn't add into the totals, but that aside, the, I think, I hope that council understand the overall impact of changing to the five to one ratio. And the council appreciate that administration attempted to provide some options and alternatives to you for mitigating what appears to be a substantial impact on those thirty eight Lake Edith properties. And I will pause to answer any questions. I have no doubt that there will be some. I'll just sort of recycle back to alternative A. I will stop my screen share, and I appreciate that we may have to turn it on and off as people may wish to ask questions, but I'll stop now so that you can see your colleagues, Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Questions for administration? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath, and not so much a question, but an observation perhaps. I have a different understanding of the treatment of the Lake Edith properties, and it it seems small, but it is, it is critical in my view, and my understanding is that there is not a separate tax rate for those properties. They are treated differently because they don't get the same services. So because they're out of town, they are, they pay a portion only of our budgeted cost. So operations, for example, which is a big chunk of our budget, is not part of the tax bill for Lake Edith properties. They pay for the more soft services. I think that's reflected then in a lower tax rate, but not a tax rate in the same sense as five point one to one tax rate. So a different amount, and then complicated because some are seven twelfths leases and some are twelve twelve, so even within Lake Edith there are differences, but I I I might argue, and I don't want to enter into debate with with administration on this, but but it's not necessarily a tax rate difference with Lake Edith. It's that they don't pay for all of the services that residents in town pay for because they don't get those services. And that's why we see that particular adjustment.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given?
So, Mayor Ireland, the answer is actually they get both. So they, if you look in the tax rate bylaw, they actually have, they do have a distinct mill rate where it says Lake Edith seven months, so they do actually have a different mill rate. And that's where they're at that zero point five eight three 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 to one. And they also have that split of allocation of cost of service, recognizing that they don't receive the benefit of all the services. That's that's that complexity that I was really hoping to avoid in our discussion because it is true. It is there, and it is extremely complicated. Ms. Malinchuck really does have to to do quite a bit of mathematic gymnastics to be able to work through it. But for our purposes of the the tax rate discussion, they do and have always received a different mill rate. And on top of that additional mill rate, they don't necessarily pay for services that they don't benefit from. There's an additional calculation that happens when we're allocating the cost of service to different classes.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demota?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Deputy Mayor McGrath, and through you to Mr. Given and administration, namely Ms. Mallunchuck. This is probably the clearest picture I've ever seen of this ratio breakdown and very appreciative of it. So it gives me a better understanding of, you know, what the complexities are with going forward with this. I just have one question through you to Mr. Given, Mrs. Chair. I noticed that in the presentation that you just gave us, the overall requisition is just over eight million dollars, and then within, you know, our I guess, proposed tax requisition with the surplus added in is just shy of eight million dollars. And I think there's about a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars in there from my quick calculations, and I was just wondering why there's a discrepancy there. And and maybe just some clarification because I I just noticed that there was a difference between the two.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor McGrath, it's because we have, as council has asked a number of times to have policing broken out separately, that hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars you're seeing is is policing. Again, just another wrinkle. If at some point we chose to recognize that policing just as sort of built in as a part of our municipal expenses, then that would become a lot clearer. But what we've done here, you know, in council direction is to have that broken out separately. And so what we're looking at is at those core pre-existing municipal services and the requisition required for that, policing is additional on on top. And so that's that's a part of the explanation of the difference in the number.
I should have put two and two together, seeing as if that was the number, but I do appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
Any further questions for administration? Counselor Butler?
I'd like first to thank you, Mr. Given and Ms. Mallunchuck for providing these numbers. I recognize it was a lot of work. I think it's an extremely important discussion, so I think it is work that is needed. And also recognize that it was put together in short order, including I have no doubt some work over a long weekend, so thank you very much for that. I am a little confused about the rec, the recommendations have been offered relative to Lake Edith, and part of the reason I'm confused is I can't reconcile what you've shown us with the mill rates that I see in the table within the draft bylaw. The mill rate for Lake Edith is point five six one. The residential mill rate is two point two seven two. That puts those seven month properties at paying, paying approximately a quarter of the municipal mill rate relative to the urban residential. And I understand that that is a combination of consideration for seven months occupancy and the reduced range of services. What I don't understand is, so I, so what I'm saying is I can't see that point five eight. I I have a hard time deriving that number, but what I don't understand is, given that the the process is, so we need eight million and eighty thousand, a little over eight million dollars in taxes, let's say. Let's say we need a requisition of eight million dollars to keep the amount simple. And if we adjusted the in-town versus the in-town urban, sorry, the in-town commercial versus residential to from five point one to five to one, and just left the Lake Edith properties where they are relative to urban residential, and then we divide the eight million dollars that we need among those classes. I don't understand why there would ever be consideration of a need for an option that would see a reduction in revenue. And it it, I feel like we're missing the simplest solution, and you take the eight million dollars and you split it out among the three classes, leaving the Lake Edith at twenty five percent of the the residential rate. And it all just flows. So I just having trouble understanding why we could be left with a deficit by making the change between the other two classes. And I I feel like you mean to have answered that question in your presentation, but it's still a little lost on me.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, if I may, Counselor Butler, no, you know, I I don't think I meant to answer it. I think the, I left it implied, and and maybe I shouldn't have done that. If our understanding was that council wished to comply to the letter of the legislation where non-residential properties paid at five, a ratio of five, and residential properties paid at one. So five to one. And so what you what you're seeing here is, I mean, the Lake Edith properties are not commercial properties. They are, are understanding residential properties. And so if we are complying with the letter of the law, then they should pay at that one ratio as well. And so, you know, that that's where, that's essentially option A is is seeing everybody at that ratio. Now, if council says, well, that's a, that's a significant increase in burden to this, a limited number of properties. That's where administration want to provide some alternatives to council to change it. But if we're, if the intent is to get rid of the point one from the five, then it would, it, administration was under the view that it, the discrepancy between the Lake Edith properties and the other and general residential properties is actually even greater. Like we're talking about a half of a percentage point rather than a point one percentage point. You know, and so so the intent here was to comply with the letter of the law with a strict five to one ratio between commercial properties and residential properties. There are alternatives to offset that. But if you're going to offset the impact to the, to the Lake Edith properties, then the money needs to come from somewhere. And that, so you know, and Counselor Butler, yeah, I apologize, that's not particularly clear. But I think, you know, the the answer also may be that, and if I can maybe screen share again, and I'm sorry to be flipping back and forth, I know that that's not ideal. I think alternative B is the closest to what you're conceptualizing, Counselor Butler, is, you know, in order to mitigate the impact on the Lake Edith properties. And administration, to be clear, administration is showing a full mitigation in one year here. Basically, you have to collect more money from somewhere else to be able to give somebody else that that reduction, because we have to have money to provide a rebate. It has to come from somewhere. And so this might be the alternative B, might be the closest to what you're you're imagining, Counselor Butler. But again, just to be really clear, the math, the math here isn't straight line because there's this additional segmenting of cost of service among urban and rural that's also happening in the background that adds an additional layer of complexity. But, you know, if 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 we need to collect eight million dollars and we want to have commercial properties pay at a five ratio and residential properties pay at a one ratio, and Lake Edith pay less than one, some amount of less than one, then we need to make up the difference from some other class. Probably still clear as mud.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Butler?
Thanks very much. I'm getting there. The point five eight reference is not the point five eight ratio is the ratio between the municipal rural mill rate. So that is what the very few number of municipal rural residents pay. This is people that live outside of the boundaries of Jasper at some of the commercial properties and so on. So it is the ratio between their rate, which is nine point nine six two, and the Lake Edith rate of point five six one. The point five is that's twelve, that's seven divided by twelve. Point five five eight is seven out of twelve months. And the point five eight ratio is the difference between what Lake Edith residents pay and what other out-of-town residents pay. So I I still feel that we can keep that seven twelfths ratio in place. And if administration, I think we can decide that we don't mean, nor do I think we can move Lake Edith residents to a full one because they only receive a portion of the services. So that's where I'm confused. We could decide to try, but I don't think we can because the bulk of the difference that there represents the service range that they are provided with, and I don't think we can tax them for services that they don't receive. I've probably now really confused the issue, but I now see where the point five eight is. If you look on the table, under item three, it's the difference between the mill rate of point five six one and the mill rate of point nine six two.
Mr. Given?
Well, I was just also going to additionally point out that there is, you know, we actually have. So if we're, if we call the Lake Edith seven month properties residential, we actually have three different residential mill rates. We have urban residential at zero point zero zero two two seven two. We have rural residential, and I imagine, and Ms. Mallunchuck clarify if I make a mistake here. I would imagine that those are the other Lake Edith properties, the twelve Lake Edith properties, or any other residential properties that are outside of the urban area at zero point zero 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 nine six two. And then we have the residential rate for the seven month properties, which is the five six one. So again, going to a strict five to one ratio, those seven month properties would have to actually, you know, be at that urban rate, acknowledging that there is also math happening in the background that says they actually aren't apportioned an equal share of the cost of all services because there's an acknowledgement that they don't receive the benefit of all services. So this this council, I will say the complexity here is not unsolvable. This is something that administration and council would be able to address and work through. The complexity here is challenging in five days of time for all of us to think through. Council didn't receive the presentation ahead of time. This is not presented with a high level analysis of these other complicating factors of the apportionment of costs and what that would mean for budgeting and and maybe even some of the historic reasoning for why these things exist. And my, I would offer to council that, well, we can make an adjustment this year. And there may be some benefit to doing that. If council wished to provide additional support for commercial properties that would be equivalent to to the change to five, a ratio of five, a cleaner way maybe to provide that is in the form of a rebate through the the reserve, the COVID reserve for this year, while also directing administration to present the budget, the twenty twenty two budget with additional detailed analysis of this issue. So that, you know, so there there may be a stopgap measure that would provide the relief that moving to a five to one ratio would provide without getting into the complexity this year. And council could direct administration to get into the complexity and solve the issue on an ongoing basis as we discuss the twenty twenty two budget. Because this will be challenging, but you know, we will go through this quite a bit today. And no doubt, I will make some additional mistakes in presentation and math, and because it is complex, you know, Ms. Mallunchuck has been behind the scenes. Uh, working the numbers on a lot of this and attempting to explain it to me and me to you. And I think that that is a challenging environment for us to 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 arrive at a really clear understanding of the numbers.
Thank you, Mister Given, Counselor Demota.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate having the opportunity to discuss this and actually bringing all of this to light because. Um, I I might recall this a little differently. But from my recollection is all these changes came in around election time for this term and it was, it was on the cusp. Of twenty seventeen, so, um, and I'm not sure if the MGA, the new MGA was already enacted. But, um, it didn't give a a to pass council an opportunity to address this. And this was really dropped on on our laps for for this term of council. And I would just, I would be, I would feel remiss. If we pass this along to another council without even reviewing it, because we had the opportunity within our term to. Kind of straighten the course or right the boat, so to speak. And, uh, I would, I would hate to just hand this off to to another. Uh, council without having a review on it or having the proper discussion it needs. So, um, you know, we do have an opportunity here because of, you know, the surplus from last year. Having the most funding applied to maybe provide a little cushion. For that transition to write the, because then if if we at least get that the the non residential portion to five. Um, you know, that that puts us more on a on a cleaner course in in alignment with the MGA. So I appreciate that. I do have a few more thoughts, but I'd like to hear from, um, if there are any other things to address from other counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. Any other questions or statements from council? Counselor Butler.
I have a suggestion. I think it's incumbent on council to consider the tax rate, the mill rate ratio. Um, I've been clear about this, of course, last week and in years previous when we're faced with this. With. And annually with tax rate by law. My primary issue. That I would like to address really relates to openness, transparency and accountability. In this sense, we pass every year the tax rate by law. Which is based on a budget that has received a great deal of deliberation and I can always. Um, account for the decision made relative to the budget, whether I agree with it or not. However, when I am questioned by residents, well, uh, and and to be honest, mostly by businesses, well, why do we have? A five point one to one mill rate ratio. The best answer I can give them is because that's what we do. Uh, we have been doing it for ten years and more and. It has never come to us during my term as council as part of the question that we address ourselves to. So some of the mill rate ratios that we look at are are complex. And some of them are mandated because we provide a certain, um, amount of service within the. Core municipality and we provide a lower level of service within the specialized municipality and that leads to a ratio. And that ratio is really dictated by circumstance and not by a decision of council, but the five point one to one ratio. Is a decision of council. It's just that we don't. See that reflected anywhere other than in the five, the fine print. And I believe strongly that the question of what is an appropriate mill rate split is one. The council is accountable for and should address. So that's the preamble. But it's complicated. It is complicated by the fact that we have in town and out of town taxpayers. And now, and we even have some that only pay based on seven out of twelve months. So my suggestion is. Let me back up. There is a time concern. Mister Given, thank you very much for pointing out that it's not really a legislative one, legislated one, but. We need a tax rate by law. Sooner rather than later. Last year, we passed the tax rate by law around this time of year, but then we. Told taxpayers that, well, you don't really need to pay until September first anyway. So we're not under huge time pressure if we were to follow that sort of same trajectory, but I don't. Want to see this drawn over a great period of time. Nor is it necessary. I think that. I would suggest that we form a small and nimble. Tax rate working group comprised of perhaps a couple of counselors or as many as would really like to be involved. A couple of members of administration to sit down and work through this and make recommendations to council as to. What we might do with the split. I think this is the year to discuss this. Some have suggested that no one should be put off to twenty twenty two. But we did receive submissions from the Tulsa Association and the Chamber last. December where this mill rate split was brought up and those. Organizations were told that while that was not really the time to have that conversation. That at time of the tax rate by law expressions is the time to have that conversation. I think that we owe it to the community and to our. Particularly and to our taxpayers to have the conversation. And my proposal would be to form a little committee. That we take a little closer look at this. It's uncomfortable. In a public venue to be starting debate with one another. Are the numbers we're looking at the right numbers? And come back with a suggestion to council of what switching the rate to five to one. Um, or the suggestions the main in the letter that go to four point nine to one, we look at. What that would look like for the community, what. The various classes of tax, what the impact would be on the various classes of taxpayers, and then we should be able to dispense with the decision. At the next regular meeting. Sorry, not probably the regular meeting a week from now, but no later than the following. So I would offer that suggestion that we push this to a little committee or working.
Counselor Demota.
Yeah, I think a little bit more work needs to be done on this and, you know, I'm saying this because I just politically. I think that this puts us in an awkward position, um, with respect to giving someone a further rebate. Um, you know, I had received over the last year, uh, some correspondence and it it seems to be more from a. A a certain segment of the community, but, um, you know, addressing it whenever we've, uh, we've made an attempt to reduce the tax envelope. Or even, uh, providing, uh, the surplus from last year into this one that, uh, we're given. There's a perception from people that don't understand how this, this whole thing works out and and how we're kind of strapped to property assessments and. And having, uh, you know, our taxes being our our only means of of funding the tax envelope. Um, that when we do make these kind of rebates or 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 kind of, um, reduce the the tax requisition that. We're giving, uh, people that already have opportunities or the wealthy, uh, uh, for the rebates and it's just. It's it's mainly because, uh, you know, when we have the non residential. Seventy five percent of our tax dollars that are are generated through that tax requisition are coming from the non residential sector. So there's a perception that when we bring it down, that we're giving the the rich a break and it's just, we're not giving the rich a break. It's just. The way the whole thing's rolled out. So the biggest contributor obviously will see, uh, a a more of a return because they. They, uh, provide most of the the funding there. So, um. But I want to get away from that perception and I think that when you see like in brackets, there are rebate points to the Lake Edith property. There might be assumption there that, again, we're doing the same thing and that's not the intention. So. Um, I would really like to to have a further review and see if we could just clean up. Keep the five one to one and is there an opportunity to change the individual mill rates within that one? To to reflect the services that are being received from the, uh, the. The non local or the rural, uh, the Lake Edith properties, let's just say for clarity. And i- if there's a way to manipulate that legally and then not have that that awkward, uh, five to one to, uh, point five eight. Um, split. Because it it's terribly confusing and I think it could be a lot easier, but I'm not sure if we're able to do that through the MGA or not. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Demota. Counselor Keller Empi, then Mayor Ireland.
It's very confusing. I'm very confused. Um, I'm. I find it confusing that we just don't move the Lake Edith properties. To, um, point seven to one. I I'm not sure. So I agree that we should have a workshop. And I kind of just want to follow up on what Counselor Demota was saying. I get what you're saying, but and I agree with the counselor, the mother like, there's this that, oh, work labor in the business. We have a lot of business in town that own a small property. And they're down eighty percent this year. And those people that rent from some of these people are down eighty percent and they get to pay that tax bill. So I think it's time. I've been on council eight years and this is something that we've always said that should be addressed, but. The business community never came to us and asked us to address it. Now that they have, I think we really do need to look at it and. Um, I think a small workshop, um, bring back some ideas is the way to go.
Thank you, Counselor Keller Empi, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pogra. While I I'm quite prepared to enter into the discussion, I. I hesitate to suggest a working group, um, is the way to approach this. I think we can dispense with the numbers. Um, they are confusing, but I don't think they're necessary. To what the decision is that council has to make and that is what does equity look like? So we have a currently a five point one to one. Residential to non residential. Tax rate split that is a conscious decision, um, intended, um, insofar as was considered by council of the day. Um, to achieve equity in the property tax system. Um, historically, um, when the municipality was created. The tax rate was seven point one to one. It was later reduced, um, through discussion and quite consciously, um, to six to one and now down to the current. Five to one. So it has been looked at, um, but only occasionally in the last twenty years. But this is where we're at now. And it reflects two things, um. Historically, when the municipality was created, we attempted. To do what appeared to be as seamless a transition as we could achieve. Given the move from Parks Canada land rent to municipal taxes and. The formula at that time resulted in a seven point one to one tax rate split because commercial land rents. Were that proportion, generally speaking, of residential land rents and so, um, to to leave whatever. Equity there might have been in the system. That seven to one split was was the starting point. At some point, there was, um. A reduction in education property tax for the community and all of that was passed on to benefit. The non residential taxpayers and now I've forgotten, um, the second occasion to reduce it. But the point always has been that if we are looking for revenue from visitors. It is more likely to flow through commercial enterprises, so non residential than than residential and so. We have grappled with this and I agree that it is complex and difficult, but it's, it is. Really a question, what does equity in our community look like? And I think that's something that council can tackle without burdening staff. With producing a whole bunch more numbers, um, that will just confuse us in any event. So. If council is willing, I am certainly inclined to approach this at a committee, the whole level. Um, have a deep discussion. I think we should at the same time. Consider what we think we might do if we ever do achieve alternative revenues. I- is that intended to be additional revenue or replacement revenue? How how does it change? What we might do with our tax structure? And finally, if we're going to enter into this discussion, I think we should look at. Division three of part ten of the Municipal Government Act. Which allows council to impose business taxes, not on property owners, but on operators of businesses. And Counselor Keller Grandpi makes a good point that there has been some suffering there, but in other times. Um, the the taxes do not get passed on necessarily to the operator. So there are a. A raft of issues which I think are primarily. In the philosophical governance sphere, not in the administrative sphere. I would be happy to enter into that discussion, but I hesitate. To think that we can burden administration with just a raft of numbers and that's going to help us come to a decision. It's, I think, going to add more work for them, more confusion for us. And distract us from what is, um, our primary objective is to insert what we. Considered to be an equitable solution. And equity doesn't just come from the numbers. So that that would be my position on it, but. Um, enter the debate, um, right away. Uh, we can bring this up at the next committee of the whole if we like. But again, I I am hesitant to suggest that. That administration needs to do any. Further work before we get ourselves sorted out about where we want to go philosophically.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Butler, then Counselor Demota.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mayor Ireland. Um, I agree absolutely. And, um, I also have thought a great deal about part three. Um, there is, I believe, a completely untapped opportunity to consider, um. Uh, perhaps better path toward equity, particularly given the, uh, we do have. Whether they are acknowledged in our tax by law or not. We do have different classes of commercial operations, which perhaps philosophically. Shouldn't, could and should be subjected to different tax rate rates and business taxation allows. That potential. My suggestion of a working group was really intended to, if if it is necessary to crunch numbers. To solve a problem such as the Lake Edith issue and I I want to say upfront, I don't think it really is. Uh, the problem that has been suggested. That was the only reason for offering that. I agree. It is absolutely a philosophical question based on. Perceptions of what equity looks like. And it can be addressed at committee the whole and I also am more than ready for that conversation. Perhaps, given the information, we we received some more information. And, uh, perhaps a conversation really whole to its sense would allow us to, and I think it would allow us to reach. Point where a decision can be made and we can move forward. So. Certainly did not mean to push us into a make work project. And I agree with all of the comments that Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, Counselor Demota.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a time to to continue or, uh, source new tools and. You know, I I've been speaking to some members in the community and, you know, we were talking about land rent. And, you know, maybe going for, you know, permanent relief of that. And, you know, one of the comments that came back to me. Uh, was that if you feel like you've made a mistake, a huge mistake. Would you go and want to repeat that again? And they're making reference to the deal that Banff got originally. And we've been fighting for a long time with the with the feds, um. To, uh, you know, argue, uh, the reasoning behind our land rent. And, you know, for the amount of relief that it it might give, uh, to our community temporarily. Um, we have an opportunity now and I know that there's only several months left in this term. And, uh, maybe other, uh, municipalities like Banff and Canmore don't want to beat the drum anymore, but. We've just recently been recognized by the province that we are. Unique and we did get some funding already, uh, through the most funding, the extra funding and and I think while that iron is hot and that opportunity. We should keep that discussion alive. We should keep it alive with our MLA because he was very instrumental in in bringing us that extra three million dollars and. With that recognition, I think there might be an opportunity to have further conversations with this particular government right now. I know that, uh, you know, we have a short term here, but you know, that the provincial government, uh. You know, maybe in in power a little longer after, um, you know, our, uh, elections here municipally. But I I think it's worth keeping that iron hot, uh, even more so to pass the torch on to the next council that. Might have the ability to deal with it at a greater level. So, um, here while we're having these discussions, the community can see how difficult it is. For us to to requisition the the money that we need. for us to, to requisition the, the money that we need. And, you know, having, um, being in a, in a resort area where our visitors put a lot of stress on our infrastructure, gives us an opportunity to have that discussion. I think that we should continue to beat that drum provincially and, and drive this forward. And hopefully we can get some more stakeholder support by having these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Demoda. And the other discussion on this tax rate split. My personal viewpoint on this is very aligned with Mayor Ireland's suggestions. I, I believe we can tackle this at the committee of the whole level. I would appreciate for these conversations to stay at the public forum and to not go to an ad hoc working group, as I do believe that there will be significant debate and this is the table for debate in a public forum. I do see lots of value in Mr. Given's suggestion of fifty-two thousand dollars perhaps from the COVID reserve buffering this year's tax rate bylaw for the commercial sector, if that's a desire of council to move in that direction anyways, though I do see the the example of working on this for some time and including this in the twenty twenty-two budget presentations to be considered with lots of intention and, and lots of time going into it rather than in the next couple of weeks, understanding that administration does have to get some cash flow to continue operating the municipality. And tax rate notices do need to head out at a sooner rather than later date. Do we have any action coming from this discussion? Do we have a, a motion perhaps or, or some intention to bring this conversation to another committee of the whole meeting, Mr. Given?
Uh, I'll just say from an administrative perspective, uh, we do need some clarity from council on what direction they wish to take. We're here because administration had brought forward the draft taxation rates bylaw to council for approval. We, uh, can't leave here with no direction. Uh, we do need to know what council's desires are for the twenty twenty-one tax year, whether they wish to uh, extend that date, uh, so that there's more time to have this discussion. Whether council wishes to forward the draft taxation rates bylaw to regular council for approval, while the discussion about how to mitigate that, uh, tax ratio impact on commercial properties happens. But, you know, we, we do need to take a direction. The council needs to, you know, give us some form of direction because we are legislatively required to pass, uh, tax rate bylaw at some point in the year. Taxpayers, all, all classes will benefit from knowing what their taxes are going to be. And so they can account for that in their, in their operations. Um, I think, uh, so, so I just, from an administrative perspective, we need to have some direction that isn't either or. Either we are moving forward with this tax rate bylaw as is in your package or council is directing us to revise that tax rate bylaw in some way. Yeah. So we, we do need some clarity of direction. We can't end this agenda item and move on to the next without taking some, providing administration some direction.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given councillor Butler. You're on mute councillor Butler.
Sorry, thank you. I feel we're ready to debate the, uh, a change in the tax in the mill rate ratio. I am prepared to propose, as I did mention last week, that we look at moving the tax rate ratio by point one or point two for twenty-three-one. It's a relatively small change with relatively minimal impact, either, either one of those options. I've made my case for considering those changes. I think we all understand why it's there. Um, I'm thrown a little bit off by the suggestion that it leaves us with a, a hole to fill with respect to lake heated properties and, and my only hesitation in just moving forward with debating either one or both of those small changes in the tax rate bylaw is, is that, um, I would, I don't want to impose a change on tax rate bylaw and leave administration struggling to figure out how to, well, now what do we do? Can I, we should leave ourselves short twenty-nine thousand dollars in the budget just because we decided to make a ratio change. And I not convinced that that would need to be an outcome. But I myself, I'm ready to just deal with the question uh, with or without one more committee meeting to discuss it.
Mr. Given?
Yeah, I, I think we're all struggling with a little bit of the math here. Um, and I think one, one way to consider this would be if council wished to move to a uh, five to one ratio between, you know, the gen, you know, the, the non-residential and the residential and leaving the Lake Edith properties at the zero point five eight three three. Essentially what it would mean is that extra burden for us to be able to meet our total revenue requirement would, would end up on the general residential tax base. So that twenty-nine thousand dollars would shift across to the general residential tax base. You know, I, I, uh, subject to Ms. Mountain Chuck correcting me, but I, I believe that that would be the case. And then council, so essentially the, the residential tax base other than Lake Edith, would go up, you know, by seventy-four thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars would be shared. That increase would be shared among all residential taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor Demoda?
Well, I just wanted to say if, if committee of the whole was going to defer this conversation to the next committee of the whole and not council per se, that's an option and that's not, uh, really given direction to administration. And you know what? Yes, administration would probably like to receive that, but we're not obligated at this point to, um, to go in any direction if we don't want to. So I, I understand that, you know, there are some timelines, but within the MGA, it gives us to the end of the year to, uh, impose this. And I realize that, you know, we need to get some cash flow into the system. But to what level of urgency and to what extent do we, you know, feel like we're not being rushed to get this done properly? Although I am ready to have some discussion on this, I'm not, I don't know if I'll be ready by next Tuesday to at least ask first reading. So that's just what I'm feeling right now, but I'm looking forward to, to some more discussion on this.
Thanks councillor Demoda. Councillor Butler, then Mayor Ireland, please.
Thank you. Well, then I propose that we bring this back, uh, two weeks from now at committee whole with a hard uh, deadline for ourselves to have a, uh, tax rate bylaw draft for the following regular meeting that we can expect will pass. And, um, so that we can move that forward. That means the final decision would be three weeks from today thereabouts. Um, that seems reasonable, but I don't see bringing it back next week for a full discussion. If some of council don't feel that we're ready for that. So that would be my suggestion. Let's defer this to committee two weeks hence. We will have, that will give us some time to consider and acquaint ourselves with some of the math and be a decision following a week from then.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath. Two points, if I, if I may first ask a question, uh, through you Deputy Mayor McGrath to Mr. Given. I take it that, um, in the absence of any sort of adjustment for Lake Edith properties, this can be viewed as a zero sum game. So that, um, an increase on one side, say the residential, um, component is exactly offset on the other side uh, on the, on the non-resi- residential, correct?
Yes, your worship.
And so the, the number you most recently used was seventy-five thousand and I don't have a screenshot of what numbers baked that up, but it, it seems higher than I thought. I thought we were talking about twenty-two and twenty-nine, but maybe I, maybe I've forgotten the numbers, but regardless, um, sorry, you're nodding or not?
Sorry, your, your worship, you're correct. Um, the number that I should have given council. Uh, and I will share my slides that I, that I presented. Um, but the number that I should have given council, if you wish to do that, would be twenty-two thousand two thirty, which is the increase in the residential tax burden plus twenty-nine thousand seven seven five, which is the amount that the lake properties would have gone up, but would be shifted in that zero sum approach to the general residential tax base. And so, uh, my mistake, I was adding, uh, an incorrect number there. So that would be, uh, just over, um, yeah, so that would be just over fifty something, well, about fifty-two thousand.
All right. And so a fifty-two thousand dollar increase on residential taxes shared by all residential taxes offset by a fifty-two thousand dollar decrease shared among all non-residential. I'd be, from my perspective, um, almost inconsequential. Um, and I, I do not see a need, um, for further debate about that, although I do agree that there is a need to debate the much larger question. Councillor Butler had indicated that he was prepared to, or might be prepared to make a motion that, um, the tax rate bylaw come back to us next week. Um, he is proposing or was suggesting a reduction of five to one. Given the numbers and, and the continual discussion that I think is going to be necessary in any event. I am not yet so inclined, um, I had the motion, but there, I'm not sure what I would have done, but I am prepared to make a motion and I do make a motion that committee of the whole recommend to council, um, the tax rate bylaw as it has been presented to us today. I hesitate to throw in any numbers and I, I specifically decline to, to mention tax rates because I am still struggling um, with the rate for Lake Edith. I, I continue to believe that that is an outcome of the numbers, not a direction ever given by council to impose such a rate. It is the rate that works to balance, um, all of the numbers right now. So I, I'm content to accept the bylaw in the form that has been presented. But I, I do not include, and I specifically, um, decline to include in my motion a direct reference to what the tax rates would be. But in other respects, I, I would be prepared to, to move that this bylaw, uh, be recommended by committee of the whole to come before council at our next regular meeting.
Thank you very much Mayor Ireland. There is a motion on the floor councillor Demoda.
Um, was that a motion? I, I thought, uh, the mayor said he was inclined to make the motion. Uh, was, I did say that, and I'm not clear on exactly what that motion is.
That was a motion made by Mayor Ireland.
Okay. Could you repeat that, please? Sorry.
The motion is that committee of the whole recommend to council to approve the tax rate bylaw, number two, three, six, as presented to us today. So the, the document that is in our agenda today.
Councillor Demoda?
Okay, um, well, I was just going to say if we defer this to the, the next committee of the whole, um, and then, uh, we make a decision on first and second reading by the, uh, fifteenth of June, we still won't get to make a decision on third reading until July sixth because of the fifth, Tuesday in June. So, uh, and that's not designated for any council meeting unless we decide to have a special meeting to, uh, to pass that. So that's, that's where that would lie. And second, well, I'm just, I threw you, uh, Mrs. Chair to Mr. Given. If we just, if we do the five to one and having the, the Lake Edith properties stay at whatever ratio, uh, may be deemed, uh, does that keep us in compliance, uh, with the MGA if they were going to impose, um, uh, or future, this current government or future governments to get us to five to one? Would we still be non-compliant?
Mr. Given?
I would say that the answer to that is unknown, uh, because it would depend on how the province would choose to define that in the regulations. But I would say that on a strict interpretation, if we're calling Lake Edith properties residential, then comparing that zero point five eight to the five is not in line with the, because, you know, they are a type of residential property and they're at less than one. And which means that, you know, the ratio of that to, that, you know, if I, and then again, okay, I'll get myself into trouble here. But, you know, I think essentially Lake Edith properties, if you compare a Lake Edith property to a commercial property, they're paying at a, the ratio there is ten to one. For every one dollar paid at a Lake Edith property, a commercial property pays ten. I mean, it's because Lake Edith is essentially half. And that's very rough numbers. So, you know, if the government took that interpretation, your lowest residential rate can only be a ratio of one to, you know, five to one. Well, then, no, we wouldn't be in compliance. But it's unknown at this time what approach the government would take because they haven't developed any regulations providing any more detail than legislation already has.
Okay. So from what I understand, if I may, sorry, um, the maximum that we can, uh, charge non-residential is five. That's within, within the MGA, but it doesn't, it doesn't say that there's a minimum on the other side. So that's, that's kind of where I'm having that, you know, like it's five to one with a maximum cap on the five. But there's nothing saying that one has to be one. It's a maximum of one. So it could be a percentage of.
Yes. And, you know, again, uh, I guess we're in a situation where, you know, we're looking at, are we doing a very strict interpretation of the, of the legislation, you know, that there is also a, a interpretation of the current legislation that says the municipality of Jasper is not required to change anything. Because there is no regulation that specifies when, you know, municipalities needed to come into compliance if ones that were over were, you know, pre-existing or in compliance, but grandfathered like that, that definition isn't there. So councillor Demoda, you know, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of an unknown. But I, at a very, you know, sort of, if you look at the principle, is it a place where people live? Or is it a place where people do commerce? And if you say that the place where people live is at, you know, is at zero point five eight and, and the place where people do commerce is at a, at a, at a, at its current rate, there's a spread between those two of ten to one. No matter what, no matter what the mill rate actually is, the spread between them is at ten to one ratio. So, yeah, so it's, it's a, is a bit challenging because we're dealing with the unknowns of how the government might choose to move at some point in the future. The legislation, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, I just, uh, like again, I, I said, I'd feel remiss if we had an opportunity with a window and that, that the opportunity of the buffer, uh, with the surplus to level this out now so that we're not, um, you know, burdening, uh, future council that if, uh, you know, certain restrictions do come into place and there are deadlines put in that, uh, you know, we might be, the committee might be in, in more of a stressful predicament in the future and we don't know that. So, um, you know, we, we do have an opportunity here to address it. Um, it's been put on our lap to, to have a discussion at least anyway. So, uh, you know, I, I, I'm really grateful that we're having a discussion on this topic and, and whatever comes of it, it's, at least we had it. So thank you for the work.
Thank you councillor Demoda. Thank you, Mr. Given for your insight. I did include an option D on my notes. And I wrote do nothing at all as, as it's a very valid and, uh, sure, uh, option as well. So, um, with Mayor Ireland's motion on the table, is there any debate? Councillor Butler?
This point I only trying to clarify. So I understand um, Mayor Ireland's motion would bring the current form of the bylaw with no changes, um, with a five point one to one ratio. While he declines to mention that, that is what is in front of it. And it would come back with no changes for consideration at the next regular meeting. So Mayor Ireland, that's the intent of your motion. Am I correct? Mayor Ireland, that's the intent of your motion, am I correct?
Yes, that my motion is that committee simply recommend this forward. Council can do what it chooses weekends, but I'd I'd rather not engage in lengthy deferrals, which I I think will solve the problem. We need something before us. This is one way to get it there.
So I've clarified that. Thanks very much. So everyone will imagine that I would vote against that. That iteration of the bylaw next week. However, moving it forward in that form now is something I could agree to, but I would, I will then let council know that I will likely propose an amendment at that time that the bylaw be restructured to represent a four point nine to one ratio. To suggest, I don't want to engage in a ton of comp or task administration with engaging in a ton of complicated math, but if we decide that we would consider moving the ratio by a factor of point two, we could probably see the map of that. And it probably wouldn't be that much more of a difficulty to see the map on moving the ratio by point one, which would take it to five. So I could see myself agreeing to a five to one ratio. But I would prefer to look at a little more of a move. So I'm seeing this nodding. I I think it's a good way to move this forward. I just want to prepare that I would probably propose one or both of those amendments, and if they fail, walk away happily from that.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Any further debate on the motion? Hearing none, I am ready to call the question. All in favor? Three in favor, any opposed? Two are opposed. That motion is defeated. But we still need some action to move us forward.
Deputy Mayor McGrath, I think my math says that that motion actually carried with three.
Sorry, I was thinking of of quorum. That motion is carried. And we do have action bringing us back this tax rate by law for our regular meeting on June first. One point that I would like to clarify, if there is going to be a suggestion of a four point nine to one ratio presented as a discussion item on the first of June, I would 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 like to direct administration to include that for information. I don't want to find out the information on June first and and be expected to make a decision on June first about that. So is there any discussion with the rest of council on providing administration some direction to provide us that information? Mayor Ireland looks not in favor.
I do. I was answering a negative question. So. And I think is what I heard, and I shook my head. No, there is no objection from my part.
Great. And so would I have a counselor prepared to make a motion that committee ask administration to provide that information for us on June first? Counselor Keller MP.
I'll make that motion, Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Thank you. Mr. Given.
So if council can clarify specifically what motion is a bit challenging when there's a suggestion of motion and then somebody says, I'll I'll make that motion that you suggested. We need to, I think, hear specifically what it is that councils are requesting. That, you know, I think I heard that administration present an alternate tax rate by law that includes a ratio of fill in your blank.
Move it by two, four point nine.
Point nine to one to what for Lake Edith?
Can that not be done at point seven for Lake Edith? See, that's where I don't understand, like, if councils in the past have moved from seven to five point one, seven point one to five point one, Lake Edith would have moved with that. So could that calculation not be in there that it's point seven? That's where I'm totally confused on this, like, to me, it makes sense, like, so it's five point one and they're point seven to one.
I'll call on Counselor Butler, then Counselor Demota, as I believe Counselor Butler had the intention of what he wishes to present next week.
So what I want to say is that I I really don't want to engage in a mathematical debate here, and this is why I suggest that we could take this to a committee just to look at the numbers, not to debate the issue, but to look at the numbers because the Lake Edith thing is not really a ratio. My understanding is, and it is one of the problems with our bylaw, that our bylaw does not reference the Mayor Ireland could help me, there is a an agreement or documentation between the municipality and the province that defines the difference between the municipality and our taxation powers, and special municipality being the broader and the broader geographic area of taxation powers in there. The difference we're looking at between in-town residential properties and out-of-town residential properties, and the same thing applies to commercial properties, is a reflection of that document or agreement. Out-of-town properties pay about forty two percent of the taxes that in-town properties pay because they're perceived to receive about forty two percent the services. So it isn't really a mill rate ratio. They are only being taxed on some services, which somewhere along the way, somebody who I'm sure was had a good understanding, decided represented about forty two percent of the services. And then seven-month Lake Edith properties pay point five eight of that. So the the point five eight is not the ratio for Lake Edith. It is seven twelfths of the rural mill rate. So that's why, for me, to create a motion or direction that says five to one to point five eight is going down a little bit of a rabbit hole. The the rest of those rural numbers come out of other documentation. And that agreement that I I don't even know what it's called, that establishes what the specialized municipality of Jasper can and cannot tax for in-town versus out-of-town. And then overlay over that a respectful understanding that it's not fair to tax somebody for twelve months of services if their lease doesn't allow them to utilize their asset for twelve months. So I don't think that a reference to point five eight or any other particular number for Lake Edith is necessary at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Butler, Counselor Demota.
Yeah, you know, I'm I'm actually, I'm kind of frustrated that the Lake Edith issue was brought into that that percentage ratio and and Counselor Keller MP, just just to clarify, you know, even though it's it's seven months of use, if if it was going to be point seven, that would be based on ten months, but because we have a twelve-month year, you're dividing seven by twelve, which gives you that point five eight, three, 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 which I think should just be part of that that one. And yes, you know, over time, like when we brought the tax ratio down from seven point eight to five point one, you know, there was already that that huge swing to to residential. And Lake Edith was impacted by by that that percentage, which was included in the one. So it's just, it it makes it more frustrating now to have that discussion, and now I feel like we're we're being positioned again. And and not by fault of administration at all, but it's just, it puts us in in kind of an awkward spot, which I I don't think is necessary. So you know, having said that, the reason I voted no is because I needed more clarity on the numbers. So I'm looking forward to the discussion next week. And I I'm not in favor of of moving it down two points. My whole intention was just to see us get in line with with the MGA as as much as possible so that we're not burdening a future council. Right now, I'm not, I'm not really interested in bringing it down two points, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Debota, and I apologize if I I further complicated things. If the suggestion of four point nine was going to come forward at a June first meeting, I would need time to review what that impact actually meant to the taxpayers. Thus, my intention of asking a counselor, if there was no objection, to make a motion to bring that information forward to June first so that we have all of the information necessary to make an informed decision. Counselor Keller MP, do you wish for your motion to be voted on still?
That we get the information at four point nine, yes.
Mr. Given, is that clear? Perfect. Is there any debate on council? I will call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried four to one. Thank you very much, and we have been at it for quite a while without a recess. It's eleven twelve. I'll call recess until eleven twenty AM. Thank you. It's eleven twenty, and I'll call us back to order. Just wanting to clarify that administration does not need anything further from council before we move on to agenda item number eight point two. I believe that we completed eight point one with as much thoroughness as necessary, but if Mr. Given could clarify that administration has all they need to move that forward to June first, that would be great.
Yes, Deputy Mayor McGrath, I believe that we do. We will essentially prepare an alternate bylaw, so we'll have the status quo bylaw that you saw in your package today along with an alternate bylaw. And we will, in the presentation and the package that goes out in advance, have an analysis of the impact of the of the change. So council can see that rather than just the mill rate comparison. We'll show you what the the change in mill rates would actually equate to in terms of financial impact. But yes, I believe we have the clarity that we need on that issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. We'll move to agenda item number eight point two, the twenty twenty one municipal election.
Thanks very much, Council. And I just want to also acknowledge Ms. Malinchuk on that previous item behind the scenes, who was feeding me information, correcting me when I'd made mistakes and confirming when I was actually on the right track, which happened a couple of times. You can imagine which happened more. But all the work that she put into that. And similarly with this report, Ms. Nodon is the one who has been doing all of our election work. And she worked this up. And so if there are detailed questions, of course, Ms. Nodon would be able to answer them. But the essence of this is that there are a number of alternatives that are provided in the local authorities' election act to municipalities for the way in which we choose to conduct elections. Council on each of these items does need to make specific motions enabling these items. And my understanding that is in the that in the past, the majority, if not all of these alternatives, have been enacted here in Jasper. All of these are available within the existing budget, and this is brought forward to council for recommendation forward, sorry, to committee for recommendation forward to council so that administration could enact these if council so desired.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any questions or clarifying points for counselors? Counselor Butler.
Thanks very much, and thank you very much, Mr. Given, to you and your team and Ms. Nodon, as you mentioned, for the clarity of this. I just really had one question, and that is around probably the special ballot process. It's conceivable, though we all hope not, that we may have to look at very unusual measures to conduct votes depending on how COVID progresses. And I'm wondering, will the motion brought forward allow administration to react and put it into process? Put processes in place as has we have seen happen across the country in some elections, has been made necessary for anything from telephone telephone voting to email voting to or would extreme measures like that have to come back for another motion from council? Or have we even addressed that possibility?
Mr. Given.
Well, again, to be confirmed by Ms. Nodon if she wanted to offer a supplemental, but I would suggest that the special ballot provision, depending on your interpretation of unable to vote because of physical incapacity. You know, if you are not physically able to attend as a result of public health restrictions due to a pandemic, for example, then, you know, I would feel comfortable making that justification that that was the physical incapacity that prevented somebody from physically attending and required the use of a special ballot. I I think we would have that latitude. I'm not sure if that's the strict interpretation that Ms. Nodon would read, or if other municipalities have used other other aspects of the legislation to enable alternate measures. But I'd suggest that the special ballot provision could be used if it became necessary. Ms. Nodon, do you have a supplement to that?
Ms. Nodon.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I just wanted to add that the province specifically addressed whether special ballots could be used for for different reasons and is essentially expanding the mandate for special ballots, and the answer was no. They turned it down and said that was not going to be a thing. So what you're seeing before you is reflective of the information we have through the province, but also through the municipal clerks association, which is quite active in discussing what a vote during a pandemic might look like. And we have a few Alberta municipalities that went through a by-election this winter, so some lesson learnt lessons learned there. And my understanding essentially would be if if the COVID situation is not or if the COVID situation is much worse than than it is now, essentially, really putting some limitations on the voting station itself and physical distancing and one way in, one way out, and and ensuring that all those health protocols are followed, has been how elections have been run in other communities. The special ballot, I was hesitating on the special ballot, whether to request it or not, but given the pandemic is why it's here, essentially. And there is a potential that institutional vote might become an issue. So institutional vote means hold, having a voting station inside Alpine Summit Seniors Lodge, for example. And whether that's possible or not is is a is a question, absolutely. And and in that circumstance, if a physical incapacity of the returning officer might be more so than than the other way around from the voter, right? But part of the reason I brought up special ballot was specifically for that reason, because we're not entirely sure yet what that's going to look like. We sure hope that by September, most people are vaccinated and and COVID is is in a different scenario than we are now, but we're certainly keeping an eye out for that.
Thank you, Ms. Nodon. Counselor Demota.
We might need to get a pop-mobile type set up for our returning officer just to keep that person safe and out of harm's way. But no, I I really appreciate the thought behind this and the consideration and and I think very valid. So yeah, I'd like what I see. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. A fairly minor item, I I appreciate this coming forward. Thank you, Mr. Nodon, for that. And I I am, of course, in favor of each of these provisions to broaden the opportunity for our our local people to vote. When the matter comes forward, I assume that committee will recommend this to council. But the motion itself, I I wonder if the wording matters, that the middle two bullets in particular suggest singular wording, and so I would rather see a motion that says authorize advanced voting, because we might have more than one advanced polling station, and also authorize institutional voting so that it we would not be restricted to an institution. And I I think both of those have been implemented in past elections in Jasper, so I I appreciate that it might be seen as nitpicking, but I would like to make make our motion as absolutely broad as it can with the hope that we won't have to use it to allow ourselves every opportunity to let anyone who's interested in voting have the fullest opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Ms. Nodon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath, through the Mayor Ireland. I can certainly review the information in the legislation to ensure that that we are on side with with how that wording is presented. But I thought I would take this opportunity to provide a clarification that the motions are going to look somewhat different in in the upcoming report. So if committee recommends council authorize the items, what I see is four separate motions, and the advance vote and the institutional vote are quite straightforward in terms of the authorizing. When it says authorization, it means by motion. So council by motion has to authorize an advance vote and an institutional vote. And then the returning officer has broad authority to set the voting station location, the times, the dates. That is all pretty flexible within the mandate for the returning officer. The special ballot motion is bound to look different than what you see here. So part of the legislation outlines that the method through which people can apply for a special ballot must be specified in the motion. And I am looking for a different date than election day for the deadline for submission for those ballots, and that also needs to be included in the motion. So you can expect the special ballot motion to have more detail. And then the fourth item is to pass a bylaw for the rotation of candidates' names. So of course, that if that recommendation from committee to council goes forward, what this would look like coming back to you would be first reading of a bylaw, not an actual motion. So so there are a few process differences that I thought would be worthy of highlighting. So council is not taken by surprise whenever by surprise whenever this comes back. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of that clarification, Ms. Nedon. Any further questions? Is there a councillor prepared to bring this forward that committee recommend to council? The four points included in our agenda package? Councillor Keller MP? I can read it.
Sure. I'd just like to thank Mr. Given and team. This is awesome. And I am quite prepared to make that motion, Deputy Mayor McGrath.
Thank you very much. Councillor Keller MP's motion reads that committee recommend council authorize a special ballot process for the twenty twenty one municipal election, authorize an advance vote for twenty twenty one municipal election, authorize an institutional vote for the twenty twenty one municipal election, and pass a bylaw to authorize the rotation of candidates' names on ballots. Is there any debate on the question? Hearing none, I will call it all in favor. And there are none opposed. Thank you very much, councillor Keller MP. Thank you, Ms. Nedon and Mr. Given, and everyone behind the scenes who works so diligently on bringing this forward to us. We'll move on to agenda item number eight point three, council remuneration.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor McGrath. We're here today with a recommendation for council for committee that that committee recommend council approve the current council compensation and benefit structure and amounts for the incoming council, subject to the annual consumer price index increases as included for in the policy. We're here because policy B zero zero four council member compensation benefits, the associated administrative procedure require a regular review by an independent party. Administration participated with a number of other municipalities in an overall survey of council member compensation. You can see from the attached documentation, there's a pretty wide variety of approaches as there is the size of councils. And administrations review, and given the understanding of the financial times that we're in in the community, administration is recommending a continuance of the essentially continuance of the current salaries at their currently established rates, which you'll see in the table in the report for twenty twenty one are thirteen hundred ninety five dollars and fifty seven cents per month for councillors, and five thousand nine hundred eighty two and sixty five dollar sixty five cents, excuse me, per month for the mayor. Those amounts are adjusted on an annual basis in relation to the CPI, which is a publicly available number. And the intent of that annual adjustment based on CPI is to ensure that council salaries don't end up so far behind what market compensation is that it acts as a deterrent for people choosing to run because they simply couldn't afford to give their time to be on council. Administration believes that the currently established salaries are within an appropriate range given compared to municipalities, and that's why the recommendation is essentially a status quo recommendation, and it is here for council consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Are there questions from councillors? Councillor DeMota?
Well, I certainly understand and from experience, you know, appreciate the the depth of this information and and also appreciative is how you worded the municipalities by number and not specifically reference them by name. So I think that provides, you know, just it it makes the numbers look justifiable and not really put a personality, you know, to a town or anything like that. So I think that well done. And, you know, I'm very happy with the information that came forward. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor DeMota? Councillor Butler?
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Given, Ms. Nidon, and whoever worked on this. It was a great and fast review. I appreciate it. I want to make the point only so it is remains on the record publicly, even though it's been mentioned before that the municipality engaged in a thorough outsourced review, an independent outside review four years ago to help establish the compensation levels that we're currently sitting at, which have only been incremented since then by CPI. So in case it looks like this is sort of administration, an in-house review, it's important to note that last election, a really deep and thorough review with an outside consultant was conducted. Thanks.
Thank you for that, councillor Butler. Any other questions or comments? Is there? Oh, sorry, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McGrath. I'd also like to emphasize the point, and it's confirmed in our policy, that the process that we have adopted in Jasper is a process designed to, as far as we can, distance ourselves from setting our own remuneration. So as indicated in the recommendation, this is a recommendation which takes effect for the incoming council. And even though in this case, it confirms the existing situation, the intent is that this council set the remuneration for the council and its own. It's a really important to be made in my mind, and it's worth emphasizing that this is as close as we get to a conflict of interest, and yet it is one that is imposed upon us by legislation. No one else can set remuneration. So this attempt to set remuneration for an incoming council is our best effort to distance ourselves. And that is something that I think ought to be emphasized publicly.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given, then councillor DeMota?
The mayor is hundred percent correct on that point. And if council wanted to include additional clarity in the motion, perhaps changing the word the incoming council to the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five council would make it a little bit more clear that the impact of this motion only applies to those people who are elected after the twenty twenty one municipal election and will only apply for that term, and specifically does not apply to people who are elected, well, you people who were elected for this term. But maybe if you wanted to include those years, that might provide that additional clarity and and just make that clear delineation for the public that that they can have that understanding that you are setting the salary for the next council.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor DeMota?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna make the motion, and I'd be happy to to replace that in the recommendation. So so be that committee recommend council approve the current council compensation and benefit structure and the amounts for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five council, subject to annual consumer price index in bracket CPI increases.
Thank you very much, councillor DeMota. Any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor DeMota. We're moving on to agenda item number nine, correspondence. The first item of correspondence, nine point one municipal taxes from the Jasper Hotel Association, Mr. Melneck. It's attached in our agenda. Mr. Given, did you want to say something?
I can provide a brief introduction to the different correspondence items. There are a number of different issues, but I think that the correspondence from the hotel association, again, referencing the additional correspondence received from the Chamber of Commerce was really related to agenda item eight point one, which council has done some action on. I suggest that this could be received for information. Again, recognizing that council has heard that message and is currently in the process of making decisions on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Given, and thank you, Mr. Melnick, on behalf of the Jasper Hotel Association for writing to us and engaging your council. Is there any conversation on agenda item number nine point one? We had plenty of conversation earlier. And we will see this before us on June first in our regular meeting agenda. Moving on to agenda item number nine point two, the Western States Hockey League team in Jasper, a letter from Mr. Ron White.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor McGrath. As council will see, there is a specific request from this hockey league for the option to provide a team in the municipality of Jasper. I will be direct with administration's view. They had previously contacted administration, and at this time, I would not be in a position to provide a positive recommendation that council endorse or follow up with this request. This league has previously held exhibition games in Jasper, and at the time, administration found some significant challenges in dealing in in our dealings with that league and in following up with amounts owing to the municipality. Additionally, there have been some unfortunate, very public issues for this league across their operations in a number of different communities. And so for a number of different reasons, administration is not inclined to just accept and approve the request, nor do I think we're enabled to do so. But I wanted to be direct with council that administration is not in a position that we would be proactively recommending that council support this request.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any comments from councillors? We will receive this letter from Mr. Ron White as information. Thank you, Mr. White, for writing to the municipal municipality of Jasper council. Agenda item number nine point three, a letter in support of RCMP from Edson Town Council and their mayor, Mr. Zahara.
Yes, council and Deputy Mayor McGrath, this one is a bit unique in that it's actually an exemplar of a number of emails that have been forwarded to all municipalities across the province. The government of Alberta is considering the creation of a essentially an Alberta provincial police force that would replace the RCMP. The government has taken up this issue as a result of some of the recommendations of the Fair Deal panel that suggested the government should examine this course of action. The solicitor general has undertaken with the support of hired consultants an analysis of the issue, and there was supposed to be some action or recommendation coming forward from that analysis in the spring. A number of communities have been forwarding letters to all AUMA and RMA members, essentially stating their community's position on the delivery of policing service in their community. And this one from Edson Town Council is an example of probably, and I know that I forwarded many of them on to council, of probably ten that the municipality has received. I'm sure many others are putting forward similar comments, but not necessarily copying all of the municipalities in the province. And an issue is the open question of the cost of transitioning from services, from RCMP service to a new service, and what costs might be imposed on municipalities. To my knowledge, to date, there is no information forthcoming from the provincial government on what those costs may be. Also, there is the open question of whether or not a provincial service would offer a better quality of service and policing to the RCMP. And there are obviously a variety of different opinions about that. And most municipalities in their letters are observing that the RCMP system of policing could be improved, but that their preference is working with the RCMP to improve the quality and style of policing in the province, rather than going through the the costs of transition to a new system, which may still suffer from some of the same deficits. So the letter that you see here in support of continuance of RCMP service in Edson is essentially the community speaking about what their priority is for the delivery of a service that we are all now paying for in our local communities. And it's here for council consideration of whether or not you wish to take a position on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor DeMota has his hand raised?
Yeah, just from your past experience and and your past role, Mr. Given, sorry, through you, Deputy Mayor, what's what's the main drive for the province to be going in this direction? Then my second question would be, how would Jasper as a community be affected by this, you know, being on federal land? And would there be a transition if that was to take place? Thank you.
So in the first part, I'm going to go a little bit out. I will provide a little bit of opinion. My opinion would be that this consideration of moving to a provincial police service is strictly in an effort to create more distance between Alberta and Ottawa. The RCMP are governed nationally. They are a national service and, you know, a national entity. And recognizing that the genesis of this recommendation is from the Fair Deal Panel, which was explicitly looking at the, you know, division of responsibilities and how Alberta can get a fair deal in Confederation, I think it's fair to say that the motivating factor behind this is to disentangle Alberta from Ottawa services, national services as much as possible. The second part of your question, councillor DeMota, was about the implication for us being on federal territory. I actually specifically inquired with the my parks colleague, and she informed me that the agreement and structure here is such that the service for policing in the province is the service for policing here in Jasper. So if it changed from RCMP, then it would also change to provincial police service. And I think the, you know, the real, the real question that municipalities are struggling with is, you know, would this offer a better quality of service? And there is, at the recent AUMA president summit that was focused on this issue, I'll say that it appears that many communities were not convinced that there was any information that suggested that it would offer a better level of service, and in fact, could increase costs because right now in Jasper and in communities like Jasper, the federal government actually provides a thirty percent, sorry, a thirty percent subsidy to provincial policing. So in communities like Jasper, before we get our bill, which is new here, the federal government actually pays a portion, subsidizes the cost of policing and provincial policing, which is what Jasper would have qualified under. The province then used to pick up the balance, the seventy percent. Recently, the province has chosen to share their seventy percent share with the municipality of Jasper. But if we move to a provincial police service, that federal subsidy would go away. And there would be an open question, I suppose, of who would pick up that thirty percent share that is now missing, and whether that would be the municipality of Jasper or the province of Alberta. But the the fact is that the federal subsidy for policing under the RCMP model would go away and would not likely be returned. And so the implication is that there may be an increase in costs to the municipality.
Councillor DeMota?
Yeah, if I may follow up, thank you very much for that. And sorry if I put you in a difficult situation with the first part of the question there. But, you know, understanding that you've you've had some high But you know, understanding that you've you've had some high level discussion on this and you've been involved with AUMA to to many depths. So having that information is beneficial to our community. Having said that, you know what? I think every service that's provided by every level of government can always be improved. And we should always be striving to improve it. But I'm very happy with the service that we're getting from our local RCMP and I'm more inclined to to support, you know, Mayor Zahara and their council and other councils that choose to stay with the with the RCMP as our policing body in the province. So again, appreciate the info and look forward to more discussion.
Thank you councillor Demoda. Any further questions, comments? Councillor Butler?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr Given, for putting this on the agenda. You're braver than I am in speculating as to the rationale behind this proposed change. I was just going to comment that I read pretty extensively on this through news media and AUMA and elsewhere. And I was going to comment that I simply cannot find the rationalization. It is unclear to me why the province is attempting to move in this direction. And at least until communities are presented with some sort of logical rationalization of why this direction should go, I am absolutely on the side of those who say that we are well served. Now by our RCMP in the park and in town, not as councillor Demoda said, not to suggest that improvements can't be made. Improvements can always be made, but my sense is that the organization itself and certainly here in Jasper that are always starting to improve. So I think we should do more than just accept this letter of information. I would like to suggest and propose a motion. I will propose a motion that we ask Mayor Ireland to compose a letter in support of RCMP service in Jasper and direct it to the appropriate ministers with the province.
Thank you very much for your suggestion councillor Butler. Any debate on the motion? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath and thank you councillor Butler for the motion and Mr Given, thank you for bringing it forward. I am fully in support of the motion and happy to write a letter supporting the position taken by Mayor Zahara in Edson and other municipalities across the province. I would say that from my perspective, I would be inclined, if council agrees, to add some other issues. I agree with the comments made to date that we have been well served in a policing context. And I think that Sergeant Bedaze and his connection to the community has has been exemplary. Not to say things can't always improve, but we are from a policing perspective well served. But it goes in my view beyond that for our community. We are in an iconic Canadian national park. The RCMP is an iconic internationally renowned police force. And this has importance to our community. At Red Surge events, people pay attention. So when we return to a flag raising at Canada Day, for example, our international guests are overwhelmed to have an opportunity to take a photograph with an RCMP officer in Red Surge. We get the same treatment at Remember It Stay and other significant events throughout the community when conditions are better. So it has a particular tourism attraction in our community. And in past years, we have partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to have officers, in fact, on overtime stroll around town in Red Surge because it adds to the iconic atmosphere within our community. So apart from the fact that we don't know what the costs are, but we suspect that they are going up. And apart from why fix it if it ain't broke? We have another issue, which is this is an important attribute of a Canadian national park. So I am inclined absolutely to write the letter of support motion by councillor Butler, but would add those other elements that are really unique to Jasper and add those in as one more reason why we should lobby to retain the RCMP service that we currently enjoy.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Demoda?
Yeah, and to to add to what the mayor said, very well said. Those are important. And again, to to speak to like our our services provided at all levels of government here in Jasper, I think with the RCMP really you know, putting their hand out in in assessing the the community, our bylaw officers and working with Parks Canada and 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 how everyone's interacted. And that includes, you know, our bylaw working with with Parks and 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 that full circle. So I think that it's it's been a real benefit for the community. And I think that our services and all those areas have improved, particularly with, you know, protection as well as, you know, getting positive messaging out as well. And then also working on our emergency evacuation protocols and stuff like that. I think we've made a lot of strides over the years and I think I would like to support continuing that work and holding on to those partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Demoda. So councillor Butler has made a motion that we direct the mayor to write a letter in support of continuing RCMP services. He had a few additions that he'd like to add to it. Is there any debate on the motion? I'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for the motion councillor Butler. Thank you for the letter writing, Mayor Ireland. And if there's no other correspondence, we'll move on to agenda item number 10, the motion action list, as it's been updated in our agenda package.
Yes, Deputy Mayor McGrath, a few date revisions. The council can see that administration is proposing some change dates. Specifically on the Culture and Rec Services Review, we're proposing June 22nd from the previously mentioned May. That's as a result of the length of time that we have it posted. As council knows, it is up for public comment. We're receiving comments and want that process to be able to close. And so that would be early in June. Then we would be able to bring the report back to council. So that's the reason for the date change there. I would suggest that the item of speed limits has been dealt with by council and that could be struck from the list. That has been delivered to council. Councils have that discussion. And I believe that that can be taken from the list. The principles for the utility rate bylaw, again, we're going to be moving that forward, just given the workload with some of the work, the wastewater treatment plant and a number of other operation items and operations and startup. We're advising council that we would like to move that to the June 8th meeting. And then finally, the the you'll see the Community Garden Expansion Request, the date has been changed to September 2021. Just an acknowledgement that as we said we would at the meeting, that we will go through the summer, the remediation of the site, and then during that time, follow up with the the Community Garden Group to identify other alternatives or expansion opportunities. And then finally, the council remuneration report has been delivered. And that one I would suggest can be struck from the list as well.
Thank you very much, Mr Given. I know that we like to have a motion approving this list as updated. Would you like the motion to include the recommendation to take out those couple items that you mentioned?
Yes.
Right. So that was the speed limits. And the council renumeration to be stricken from the list. And if there's a councillor prepared to make a motion that that be updated at today's meeting, that would be wonderful. Councillor Keller MP is making a motion to update the motion action list as discussed. Is that enough information, Mr Given? Perfect. Thank you. Is there any debate or conversation on the motion? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy McGrath. Two observations. One is that June is going to apparently be horrendously busy month. And so I just throw that out there. Not everything has to happen in the same month. So if if Mr Given and his team were inclined to find reason to defer some of these, it might be appropriate. I appreciate the motion list. It's really good to have before us. But it is of of the 10 items on the list. Nine of them are deliverable in the same month. And that that seems perhaps that you've been overtaxed or are overtaxing yourself. But then I take a contrary view with the one that comes back in September. And with respect to the Community Garden Expansion Request, as it relates to expansion at their current site, I agree that there is a reason to defer that until some other matters fall into place. But I wonder whether there is an opportunity in a much quicker timeframe to review alternative sites far removed from the current site. So when the Community Garden request initially came to us several years ago, we looked at a number of alternative sites. There seems to be growing demand for this. They've completed entire use of the parcel that they were given, but time, we know at inside the fence along the south side of the Lions Park. And there was some opposition, but it seemed like not a logical choice. There might be that small section of Centennial Park right at the corner of Moline and Benham, which at one time was used as a small dog off leash area. There may be other places as well. And if it's still not too late in the season to build some boxes and put dirt in them and plant some gardens, I would be inclined to get that moving now to accommodate this summer as we look at the longer term impact of an expansion at the existing site, which can't be determined until sometime in the fall.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. I I think that the latest number that I heard is on the waiting list at the current site for the Community Garden is 15 gardeners are wishing to plant but unable to because they don't have the space. So I think the recommendation of including this at a at a more soon date would be appreciated by those in Jasper who wish to be planting this season. Is there any other discussion on that item? Mr Given, would that change required to be included in the motion?
Well, I think, you know, that this item says the same, we absolutely will come back in September related to the specific site that we're talking about. If council wished to make a additional motion providing direction to administration to identify additional community garden sites to satisfy the existing you know, some of the existing waitlist, then we could come back more rapidly. It would just make it so that we have two independent items. One saying expansion of the current site, subject to these other things were going to happen first. And another motion that was on the book saying, and also identify other options that are available to us so that we can move ahead sooner. And those two issues would obviously move at separate timelines. So having an additional motion, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr Given. I'll first call the question that councillor Keller MP has presented in updating our motion action list for today's meeting. All in favor? Councillor Demoda, I don't see you. Thank you. That is carried. And is there a councillor prepared to make an additional motion for the additional community garden sites to be explored to satisfy the waiting list for the local food society? Mayor Ireland? Is there any debate on the motion? Sorry, Mayor Ireland, did you wish to speak?
No, that is fine. Thank you. I will make that motion. If the the wording that you employed was captured by administration and that is sufficient, that was the intent of my motion.
Mr Given, is that enough information for the motion for administration's purposes?
I believe it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any debate or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? That too is carried. Thank you very much, council. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, for bringing up the importance of community gardens, especially during these times. We will move on to agenda item number 11. Council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. Councillor Keller MP?
This upcoming Thursday, councillor Wilson and I will be attending the Community Futures Board meeting on Zoom. And on June 22nd is the AGM for Community Futures and invitation will be sent out. It will be on Zoom to all accounts, Mr Given, to attend.
Thank you councillor Keller MP. And thanks for all you do on on that board specifically. I know you play a a big role in our local community futures.
Thank you.
Councillor Demoda?
Yeah, our next Culture and Rec meeting is, I believe it's the second Thursday in June, and it'll be the last one before we break for the summer. I'm not sure if we decided as a group if we wanted to work through the summertime yet, but that'll probably be discussed on Thursday. I know that we have on that Thursday, I know that we have a lot of things to to cover. But I was kind of hoping that Mr Given and or Ms Neddon would be able to join us for that meeting. And I'll probably just send that extension request out to them, just to give us an update on where we're at with the with the service survey and just other things that want to address. And I think that gives an opportunity for our CAO to complete the the rotation of visiting committees and boards and just to familiar to get gain some familiarity with the faces and people that are involved in the group. So if that might work into the schedules, I would welcome a visit at least. Sorry to catch you off guard there. I was doing the same. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Demoda. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor McGrath. I can advise that councillor Wilson and I will be attending a West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority Board meeting tomorrow, where we continue to look at new government governance options, including everything from a memorandum of understanding to a commission. So that discussion is ongoing. I'd also like to report, and although this is not an upcoming meeting, I think the concluding meeting of the Economic Recovery Task Force occurred last week with a slate of recommendations adopted by that task force, which will be coming to an upcoming meeting of council, I think relatively soon, Mr Given is charged with with getting that. But just to let you know, the the Economic Recovery Task Force has, I think, concluded its task and is in a position to very shortly favor council with a list of short term, midterm and long term recommendations for approaches that should be taken sort of holistically with respect to COVID recovery, but beyond that for economic resilience for the community. So expect to see that within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I know I'm very excited to see the list of recommendations coming forward from the Economic Task Force. Is there any other councillor reports for upcoming meetings? I will be attending the Community Conversation on Wednesday. And tomorrow it is the school age group from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. There's nothing further for agenda item number 11 and 11.1. We'll move on to agenda item number 12 with upcoming events. The June 19th Community Futures West Yellowhead Lemonade Days on our agenda. If you haven't already registered, I'm sure that they have. If you haven't already registered, I'm sure that they have got all the permissions from the authorities to make sure that Lemonade Day is is happening. So while you're contemplating registering, it it is now known that it will move forward, which is really exciting. Right, we have a in camera, agenda item number 13.1 for personnel matter under section 17. And a 13.2 deliberative matter under fourth of section 24 to discuss in camera. We will recess briefly. Sorry, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. I apologize for delaying anything, Deputy Mayor McGrath. But under upcoming events, although it's not upcoming, it is ongoing. But I thought that it was worth noting that Sunday, this past Sunday marked the beginning of Tourism Week across Canada and in Alberta. And it's an opportunity just to recognize all of our partners in the industry, all the businesses that support our local economy and all the groups that support them. So our friends and partners in Tourism Jasper, in the Chamber of Commerce, Travel Alberta and elsewhere in the province, and our regional partners as well, with whom we enjoy a special relationship with tourism. So it's an important week for them at a very difficult time. So if you have an opportunity to show support to any of our tourism partners, this is a really appropriate time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I join you in expressing the importance of those sectors and much gratitude to all of those operations in Jasper. Counselor Demoto?
Considering the potential length of our in camera, I would like to motion for this meeting to go past four hours today. Do we need specific wording for that?
No, we all understand what that means, all in favor of moving past our four hour mark of our meetings this afternoon. Thank you. That is carried. Thank you, Counselor Demoto, for keeping that organized. And we will break from 12:11 until 12:45, do we think, to come back, give ourselves some some time? And with that being said, we will require a motion to move in camera. Counselor Keller MP, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. We're moving in camera at 12:12. For the public who is tuning in today, there will be no business that we return from our in camera back to our committee of the whole meeting format to here. So we will be concluding the public portion of our meeting today at this point in time. We thank you very much for joining us today. And we will be meeting for our regular meeting on June 1st at 9:30 a.m. Thank you very much and have a wonderful rest of your Tuesday.
Great job, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.